I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for Tuesday, January 14th, 2025. The first item is pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
We're here now.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is roll call, please.
Councilmember Correll.
Here.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Homa.
Here.
Councilmember Maddox.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg, a quorum is present.
Thank you. We do not need a motion to excuse any council members. So the next item is the approval of the council agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion, changes, anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. The next item is the approval of the minutes for the November 12th city council meeting. Need a motion?
Motion to approve the November city council meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Are there any comments on that, changes? Okay, I was not here, so I'm going to abstain. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meetings, minutes have been approved. The next item is the meeting minutes for the December 10th city council meeting.
Motion to approve the December 2024 city council meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those meeting minutes have been approved. The next item is the updating meeting procedure and agenda structure. And our city manager is going to address that as she walks in front of the camera here. And please.
Good evening, mayor and council. Welcome to our new AV system. Actually, we have our representatives from Schillers here with us tonight to make sure that all goes according to plan. So thank you so much for your outstanding efforts. While we're here, I just wanted to update you briefly on some changes to our public comment process and also to our agenda format. Meetings going forward are now live streamed directly to YouTube. There is no Zoom login and no Teams login, which is something we had discussed previously. We are live streaming right now. So we've increased accessibility for people to just click on that link and be able to watch at any time. Additionally, that recording then is available immediately. There's no downtime, so people can watch meetings as soon as they are concluded. We have also adjusted our agenda to group items together a little bit more logically so that all non-business public presentations and special presentations are coming at the front. We've reordered unfinished business from the last meeting to appear between, before new business. So all of your legislation that you started last session will be concluded first, and then we'll move on to new items, new resolutions and ordinances. After that point, we will have presentations from all of us. So the mayor's report, we've segmented the council communications now into individual ward reports to better reflect the board meeting structure that we've established. So that'll be up to all of you, how formal you would like to make that or how casual. And then the city attorney's report and the city manager's report will fall into that area. The improvements to our public comment process are that we are asking folks to sign in with a name and a street address. They can leave their email if they would like a follow-up communication, either from city staff or from one of you. This will allow us to better keep clean minutes and also allow us to make sure that people are approaching the podium in order of agenda items. So for any public hearing and for any public comment item, they would simply sign in and then the deputy city clerk would call them to the podium during the public comment periods to give their comment. We are also now accepting public comment via email that needs to arrive at cityclerk@maplewoodmo.gov by noon on the day of a meeting. That will be provided to you all before the meeting. Those comments will also be part of the public record, but they will not be read out loud at the meeting. So we wanted to make that adjustment to make up for the fact that we can no longer do the Zoom participation from home. So with that, I'll take any questions you have about the revisions. Yes?
In the event that a resident or business owner wants to submit a comment online but would like it right at the meeting, is that feasible? Because if they couldn't attend due to like a medical reason or a schedule reason, you know, something like understandable, you know?
I think we would prefer to simply provide that to you and give it into the record. I think when we get to the point of reading public comments aloud, that can be extremely time-consuming and potentially take more than three minutes per comment.
Good point, thank you.
Difficult thing for people when they're writing to limit that.
And we'll have an opportunity to see how things go and then we can adjust things as necessary.
Absolutely.
No, it looks good.
I like it.
Looks great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight is public comment. Do we have anyone that wants to speak tonight? Okay. Number nine are announcements. I just want to mention that we have an opening on Design and Review Board, and we also have an opening on the Special Business District. So if you know anyone that's interested in serving on either of those boards, there'll be a signup process, and it'll be advertised on the city website so that people can consider that. Are there any other announcements?
On January 25th, we have our Sweet Tooth Tour, which Maplewood does not disappoint on the dessert options. It's always a good time to go and try out some sweets to see if then you want to get them for your sweeties for Valentine's Day. That's all I got.
In that case, we're going to now move on to item number 10, which are presentations. The first presentation are the Maplewood 101 certificate presentations for the Fall 2024 participants. So I'm going to move to the front here and call people up. And I'm just going to make sure I have the right people. Thank you, thank you very much. Anyway, so when you come up, Laura will take a picture, and then we all want to stay up here. We all want to stay up here. I have to learn how to talk into the microphone. And then we'll get a group picture, and then you can stick around for the rest of the exciting meeting. So Linda Robinson. Here we go. Do you get one every time you do this? Okay, Lizzie. There you are.
Last, not last, but August.
Okay, on behalf of the city council, I'd like to thank everyone for participating in Maplewood 101 and learning about not only what we do, but what all the other departments do. And from the feedback I've received, it's been a very positive experience for everyone. So thank you very much. Catherine Hammacher of PGAV is going to address us. So.
There we go. Look at that. Hi, everyone. I know. We're usually trying to figure out how to get screen down, so this is progress. Hi, everyone. My name's Catherine Hammacher. I met, I think, all of you at a presentation before, or maybe at a public meeting if not that. I'm an urban planner with PGAV. We are under contract, as you all know, with the city of Maplewood to facilitate the comprehensive plan process. So just giving you kind of an interim update as to where we are as of now. Do you have to do the clicking for me? Okay. So this is what we're going to talk about tonight. I'm going to give you kind of a high-level review of existing conditions, what we figured out about your community. We're going to talk about what we've heard from residents so far through a variety of different ways, and then we'll talk about the land use scenario planning process, which is what's coming up next this spring. Do the next one for me. Thank you. So there's a bunch of different categories of things we look into when we're trying to understand kind of baseline conditions in a community. One of them is demographics. So who lives here? How has that changed over time? What might that mean for land use decisions moving forward? So some of this might be surprising to you all, maybe not, depending on kind of how in touch you are with the folks here, living here. But the average household size is significantly smaller than neighboring communities. I think that probably tracks what you all consider. There's a lot of apartments in the community. There's a lot of smaller, older residences that just lend themselves to less people living together in them. The average household income is lower than St. Louis County in Missouri, which also sort of tracks, again, with the housing available here. And there were really no significant changes in racial demographics in the community from 2010 to 2024, which a lot of people were really interested in learning more about, if that transition has taken place and what that looks like. So again, this is a lot of very high-level stuff. We looked into many more details in this and how it relates to income and all those kinds of things, but just wanted to give you kind of an overview as we get into this. Next slide for me. Okay, there we go. So another big piece of a comprehensive plan, one of the most important pieces, is figuring out what all of your land is used for. So people typically do a comprehensive plan every 10, 15-ish years, and a lot of land uses shift over time. So whether it's shifting from a two-family to a single-family, or it's new commercial development, things like that, this is a chance to kind of get an up-to-date understanding about what's happening in your community. So this is what every parcel of land in your city looks like today. So there's percentages on the left. That's the percentage of area. So about 37% of your land is used for single-family homes, about a quarter for commercial, 14% for multifamily. You can see parks and open space, right-of-way industrial, they all sort of trickle down as you go. Those coordinate to that map you see on the right, yellow or orangey sort of colors. That represents where that residential is in your community. You can see the commercial corridors you're familiar with showing up in that pink color where primarily your commercial development is located. Perfect. Okay, I know this is a lot of stats, but that's why we gave you the printed-out copies as well, so you can review this later. But looking at housing, so this is that existing land use map, what every parcel in your community is used for today, but only the residential portions are sort of highlighted for you. So you can see the single-family, the duplex, and then anything more than a duplex is considered multifamily here. So again, housing occupies more than 50% of the land in Maplewood. The split between renters and owner-occupied is about 58/42. A lot of your housing units are older. Just again, it's just a function of where your community is located in this metropolitan area and how development moved west. Only 477 units have been built since 1980, so there just aren't a lot of newer units in the community. You don't have a ton of land to build newer units anyway because of the time in which your community was developed. But about 50% of the housing stock is single-family detached housing, so a freestanding single-family home that doesn't touch its neighbors on either side. That missing middle housing you all may be familiar with. It's a kind of a term that people talk about a lot these days, and it's housing that has between two and nine units. So it's kind of like that middle size. It's not a single-family home, it's not a big apartment building. A lot of communities really want more missing middle housing. They feel like that's sort of an approachable level of multifamily, and you all have a ton of it. So you, about a quarter of your housing stock falls in that missing middle housing, which is much higher than your peer communities. About 70% of units have only one or two bedrooms. So if you think back to those demographics around average household size, you know, that speaks to the fact that a lot of your units just only have one or two bedrooms. So you just wouldn't have a huge household living there typically. In terms of housing costs, this is another hot topic that a lot of people discuss here in Maplewood. The majority of rentals here are less than $1,500 a month. Again, they're small, so that sort of tracks. The median rent in multi-unit buildings, that kind of ranges. And then the median home sale price in 2024 was $270. So that includes any kind of home sale. So it could be something, a teardown, for example. It could be a small house, a big house, you know? So when we are at the public meeting, some people wanted to kind of quibble over that number, and you have to remind everyone that it includes sort of everything from the spectrum. In terms of commercials, so this is sort of the other part of the map with the pink. It's those commercial corridors. Because of the age of your community and how it developed, most of your commercial is concentrated on key commercial corridors. It's less sort of strewn throughout the community and more on those concentrated areas. You know, Big Bend, downtown, the Maplewood Commons, those kinds of areas. There's 34 office buildings. About 35% of the office space, though, exists within two buildings in the Sun and Business Park, so that's a big portion of that office. But the vacancy rates have remained below 3% for, I think we've looked back 10 years. So even during the pandemic, when things kind of fluctuated, that really remained quite consistent here in Maplewood. The cost per square foot is what has fluctuated a bit more, so it's about $15 per square foot now, which is down from the closer to 20 number that it was pre-pandemic. That is pretty consistent with trends in the region. And, you know, just you don't have a ton, so one vacancy makes a bigger difference here. In terms of retail, you have over a million square feet of retail space. A lot of that exists within some of those larger retailers that are, you know, 100,000 square feet, but also tons of small retailers. You know, 1,000 square feet at a time adds up, less than 5% vacancy there, too. Something to note here is that because you have some of those really big retailers, the, you know, if they remain occupied, that helps your occupancy rate seem quite high, even if you might have, you know, a handful or more little vacancies. If they're just 500 square feet or 1,000 square feet at a time, it just doesn't move that number very far. And then the same story is there for the $25 per square foot cost to rent, I'm sorry, for retail compared to the pre-pandemic 29. Industrial, this is another land use, you know, we look into when we think about how a community is made up. You have pockets of residential in certain areas near the rail line, for example. Not a ton of it, but, you know, sort of concentrated pockets. There's a few things that are kind of legacy, you know, they're kind of stuck around, and maybe the next tenant might not remain industrial, but at this point, it's a longstanding business, and it's been there for a while. Rent is between $8 and $12 per square foot, and vacancy has also remained quite low here. One of the other things we talked to the steering committee quite a bit is about how people move through the community. So Maplewood is part of a, you know, broader region where there's no clear boundaries necessarily as to what's Maplewood and what's the next community over. And so there's a lot of folks moving through that are both residents and non-residents. But you all don't have a highway, and so that is quite unique. If you think about some of your other peers, almost all of them have some kind of highway running through them in the community. That's something the steering committee feels like is a real asset for Maplewood, that you don't have that. You can see on the map here, you know, you have a variety of roads that are either Maplewood maintained or county maintained. Got Manchester, public transit lines, lots of walking and biking. Looked into all kinds of things related to this in terms of how it's used and where people are going and all of those sorts of things. The Greenway connection just adds another kind of element to how people use the community. And then parking. So this is a hot topic in most communities, but having the presence of a downtown in Maplewood does kind of, you know, it's a destination place. So the topic of parking and how you get to these places and where you park when you get here is one people think about a lot. So there's about 1,990 parking spaces exist in the downtown area, which you can see up there in the blue boundary. It's about 1,500 private parking spaces and 400 public parking spaces. That includes the city lease with the Schnucks lot kind of arrangement. And then there's some other dual-use spaces that serve the public on the weekends or in the evening. When you look at it like this, it feels like a lot of parking, and this is something we'll consider as we think about land use changes or we think about how people perceive the community. Is it that there's not enough parking? Is it that it's not in the same, in the right places? Those kinds of things. So again, this is just to get us kind of a baseline understanding as to where everything is in the community. Okay, that was a lot of data. So I'm going to move into the community feedback, what we heard from people throughout the process. There was an open house. Several of you were at that in October. We had about 50 people here in the council chambers representing all kinds of different parts of Maplewood. It was a pretty wide variety of people that were relatively new to the community or had been here for decades, business owners, residents. Most common discussion topics, people had a lot of concerns related to housing affordability, property maintenance, importance of commercial areas and maintaining local businesses, particularly in downtown, came up a lot. And then that focus on safety and walkability for pedestrians and cyclists throughout the We asked people about their favorite things about Maplewood and things they might change if they were in charge. So you can see here some of those things. It's a lot of the same things we heard from the steering committee and from you all. People love the central location, that it feels like a small town, there's big events, and the downtown provides more access to businesses than maybe another community of your size. You know, some concerns or things people might change, you know, related to housing options or housing maintenance, more local businesses. You know, there can never be enough, so that will almost always be something you hear in the community. A lot of discussion of trees and bikability and pedestrian safety, those kinds of things. And then we also have two community surveys. So one of them is the community survey on the city's website. So that we started at the end of October and is actually, it's still live today. We'll probably close it pretty soon. When I pulled these last week, we were at 274 respondents, so I bet we're probably pretty close to 300 at this point. You can see kind of the breakdown of how long people have lived in Maplewood, so that three-to-nine-year number is where most of the respondents came from, but it's actually a pretty good split. You know, almost 20% of people are less than three-year residents, which I think is great. It was split roughly equally by Ward, which is great. That wasn't necessarily the case at the in-person public meetings, so good that we equaled it out a little bit more there. Some of the things we heard is that there was significant support for improved sidewalks and more bike lanes and thinking about more pedestrian accommodations like crosswalks. Most wanted to see improvements on Manchester and Big Bend, so we asked the question of like, okay, if the city did pursue some of these improvements, where would you like to see them? You know, a spectrum of knowledge as to how people know how improvements like these get done and who owns what roads and all of that. So there'll be some education as part of this as well. Most dissatisfaction was seen in recreational spaces. We asked about these different land use categories and where they'd like to see improvements, what they were satisfied with versus not. A lot of people didn't know that Maplewood had this agreement with shared recreational assets, so that might explain part of the dissatisfaction, just because they didn't know that these other resources were at their disposal, that they could have access to some of these other places. So that's just an interesting thing to consider moving forward. And then 50% of respondents indicated for-sale housing is somewhat or very unaffordable. So something to consider, you'll hear that in the next survey as well. Next one. And then the second one, I'm not sure if you all know a ton about, but the Realtors Association funded a second community survey that was statistically valid. So they run these kinds of surveys in communities across the country. One of their employees is on the steering committee, so he kind of brought this opportunity to the city and said, if I could find funding for it, like, would you all like to do this? And this is something we've done in other communities to kind of check. It's a little bit of a gut check on the community survey that we do broadly to see kind of, do you get the same kinds of feelings and responses if you do a statistically valid survey? So this one had 360 respondents, and it was run at the beginning of December. It has a margin of error of 5.2%, and they did these over the phone and electronically, using landlines and cell phones. If the person answered that they didn't live in Maplewood, then the survey was over. So we, all of these answers are just from people that live in the city of Maplewood. So one good thing is that residents are really happy with the quality of life in Maplewood. People think it's great. Very little response related to that in a negative way. People are most happy with access to sidewalks, places to shop, and parks and rec activities. So that's interesting because of the dissatisfaction related to parks and rec in the opt-in community survey. You can see almost half said that housing affordability is a big problem. Now, we did have a meeting with the Realtors Association to kind of see, like, how does this compare to other communities that you do this in? You know, we obviously work in lots of other communities, but we were kind of curious based on the questions that were asked, how do you feel like that compares to other places? And they said that they didn't feel like this housing affordability question and the concern around it was unique. They sort of felt like this is, everyone thinks their community is too expensive. So take that for what you think. I think it's an interesting gut check because it did come up a lot in the community opt-in survey. Only 11% of people in this survey said it's not a problem at all, so it's definitely top of mind for people, whether it's a perceived concern or it really speaks to an issue in terms of a mismatch, is something we'll consider moving forward. Most people that filled out the survey had never heard of the comprehensive plan, so it clearly was a different crew entirely than the people who elected to fill out the survey on the website. And then we asked a question just kind of out of curiosity for what is the best way to communicate moving forward about the city of Maplewood, and people said newsletters and social media. So something to keep in mind. Attendance at public meetings was on that list, and they did not select that. So something to consider. We also did a bunch of stakeholder interviews, so we worked with the steering committee in the city to come up with a big list of folks that might be good to talk to in a more in-depth way. So we talked to residents and, you know, business owners and community volunteers and real estate folks, and on a one-on-one, like 45-minute interview with us to get their perspective on the community. Some of the themes that they talked about, similar to what other people said, the location being a strength, the small-town feel, a lot of positive perception of city staff and you all thinking about things, you know, great downtown events, but would like to see more signage and placemaking, concern that the perception of crime might deter visitors, the school district being a really positive component, and then a lot of excitement to be asked to participate. So people were really excited to be able to provide their thoughts on Maplewood moving forward. Okay, so some of the takeaways from, you know, existing conditions and then everything we heard in the community. Housing is a continued concern and priority for residents, particularly as it relates to affordability. You know, housing costs have increased in the community. It's on par with communities in the region and nationally, but that doesn't necessarily change one's opinion if you feel like your housing costs have increased. It hasn't led to dramatic changes in demographics, though. So that increase in housing that you've seen and other communities have seen really haven't changed the demographics here all that much. It also takes a long time to start to change demographics in a community because of homeownership and all those things. So something to keep looking at moving forward. Policy shifts and leadership have not had a significant impact on housing production. So you all have made some choices around housing policy in the community to try to make things happen. It hasn't significantly shifted what's happened here. That's another thing that's a long-term trend, and you don't have a ton of opportunity for housing development here, so you can't shift it all that much in your control. And the diverse housing stock came up a lot. Residents feel like that's a real asset of Maplewood as it compares to nearby communities. Downtown comes up all the time as one of the biggest positives for the community. There's some concerns related to vacancy and cost increases in downtown, but business owners continue to see it as a great place to do business, and residents love having it here. And then lastly, the land use considerations. You know, your land use environment is a lot more diverse than a lot of communities. You have a lot of different kinds of housing. more diverse than a lot of communities. You have a lot of different kinds of housing at a variety of scales and densities. You have a lot of different kinds of commercial. You know, you have a historic downtown, that's sort of a classic, and then you have like huge development that's much newer. And so you have this diverse spectrum that not a lot of peer communities have. There is a significant amount of land that's currently in floodplains, so figuring out how to move forward on that, I think is going to be a big piece of the land use discussion. And then not having ownership over several important roadways is a constraint in terms of what you can control and the types of land uses you can encourage. Okay, so what's coming up next? We've done all this kind of analysis, and now we move into what we call land use scenario planning. So what you see up there is your land use guide as part of your last comprehensive plan. What we are going to do is update this. And so we're going to think about kind of how this relates to what all those colors on the maps look like today, what are things used for today, and then what we might want to see that look like moving forward. So we'll think about potential land uses in the future, where there's opportunities for things to maybe change, where there's opportunities for some of those new things people want to see in the community. Do you have the next one for me? So this is kind of how it will work. This is an example from another community, but you'll see, we'll be looking at particular parts of the community. We'll take what the existing land uses are now, so, you know, a colorful map of a bunch of different land uses. We'll think about a few different options. So, you know, you might think about a certain part of your community being more mixed in terms of residential or commercial. You might think about one where it looks more streamlined. You might think about a key intersection that is an important place that you just really feel like you need to think about if we went this direction or this direction. So we'll work with the steering committee to kind of contemplate what areas need that thinking. We'll think about the area's character, and then that will fold into that final updated future land use map. So this is sort of where the steering committee's mind is at at this point, when we asked them, and with the community survey feedback as well, if we were to start thinking about where these scenario areas might be, if we're thinking about places where we think land use changes might be coming, or we would like land use to look different. A future land use map is different than a zoning map. A future land use map is aspirational. It's where you'd like to see your community go. So there are parts of the community that are a bit of a hodgepodge right now, right? Because they're legacy uses from the past, some have started to turn over, maybe some haven't. There's also places that maybe you would want to consider the built environment just looking different than it is today. So those are, these are some of the places that people have pointed out to us as, as key intersections or key corridors or pockets of the community that they feel like maybe just need a little more thinking. Okay, so how we move from here is that between now and April, we'll work with the steering committee on scenario planning, on figuring out kind of what are those places in the community, and then what are those different options they want to consider. So we'll think about things like, what would, what kind of impacts would it have to the number of residents that live here? If this area right now is very mixed and we want to make it all residential, how many residents would that add? What would that mean for the tax base? What would that mean for, you know, parking or environmental concerns, or some of those kinds of things? And we'll kind of go back and forth with the steering committee to think about that. And then when we move into the summer, we'll get working on planning, on the plan draft, come back to you all, and keep this thing moving until hopefully adoption late summer, early fall. Any questions?
I really appreciate the thoroughness of this presentation and all of the graphics. It helped me understand a lot. So just kind of going back to the first couple slides, when you talk about vacancy percentages, is that, is that calculation open square footage divided by total square footage for the percentage, basically?
Not units.
Not units. Because I'm really, I'm really kind of stumped on like, less than 5% retail vacancy, when like, we have a lot of empty storefronts near where I live.
So it's related to square footage?
Yes.
And so that is an interesting thing about this community, is like, if you have one big-box store that's occupied and continues to be occupied, and it makes up 50% of your retail space, for example, then you'll never go below 50%, right?
There's no other like, there's no other metrics, though, that are like storefronts open that can also be used? I guess I'm just kind of confused.
Yeah, we could look into that.
I'd like that granularity if possible.
Yeah, we could look into that, for sure.
Yeah.
It's kind of a unique thing in your community that you would have that dynamic of, but that makes sense.
Yeah, because to your point, like, a couple of big-box stores totally sway it, whereas like, when I go for walks in my ward, I see a lot of empty.
Yeah, totally.
Can you explain to me how, between yourself, the steering committee, how are you guys collaborating with the current planning and zoning commission as far as moving this forward? Are you guys working with them at all? Is there any collaboration, or is this specifically the steering committee?
Yeah, so I've given a couple of presentations to the planning and zoning board, so they know what's going on. And in the state of Missouri, they have the power to adopt the new comprehensive plan. So you all actually don't have that power. They have it. So we'll continue to engage with them throughout the process. I can't remember, is there, there is a joint representative?
Yeah, the chair of P&amp;Z serves on the steering committee.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that there was some collaboration. I was under the, same impression that they were going to have to approve this. This is a little bit more their baby, so to speak, their, you know. I'm really happy to see that this is happening. Some of the data is extremely interesting. I'm fantastically overwhelmed by it, but I appreciate you putting it together. Thank you for working with them, so, and everybody involved. So, thank you.
So, you know, we have very limited opportunities to reallocate property, land uses, but we have quite an opportunity with regards to rewriting our zoning ordinances. They're archaic, obviously. They respond to uses that have been, you know, went out with the dinosaurs. And so, you know, the idea is that transitioning the comprehensive plan into the zoning ordinance is going to be the challenge. And based on our previous conversations, the, that would be a separate scope of work, but something that, that can be handled by PGAV.
True. And a lot of the data analysis that goes into a comprehensive plan, that's why people then do the zoning next, is because thinking about like lot sizes, for example. If you're going to change something about your zoning code or residential districts, things like that, you have to have a real handle on what exists today, as opposed to maybe what your code says today. So a lot of the data can just fold right in.
Other questions?
No, thank you. Excellent. Thanks.
Thank you very much. So, the next presentation is going to be the fiscal year 2023, 2024 audit presentation. Keith Slusser, is that how you pronounce your name?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Evening, everyone. Sorry I was running a little bit late, but I had family stuff that I had to do first. And luckily, I pull, walk into the meeting, and I see I'm not even up yet. So it worked out perfect. So, well, your year-end is June 30th, so we've a couple months away from that, so I'm not really going to dive into the numbers or the meat and potatoes of your audit. We issued two audit reports in there, and that's the kind of the most important part of your audit. First one is our independent auditors report. This is where we test your compliance with generally accepted auditing standards, governmental accounting standards, and we have an unmodified opinion for that report. That's the kind of opinion you want to receive. It means there was no departures from generally accepted accounting standards. So clean audit opinion on there. The other report that we issued is called Yellow Book Audit Report on Internal Controls and Compliance. So as part of the audit, we go in and we stress-test your internal control structure, your compliance with some state statutes. There's too many state statutes to test them all, but we pick random ones and test them and make sure that we're following what we're supposed to be following. And there, we're looking for significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, and that, too, there was no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. So there was a clean opinion on that one as well. So two audit reports, and both were exactly what you would want them to be. And then there's 114 pages to keep you up at night.
So in, in the old days, the audit process was very chaotic, and I assume that, based on the brevity of the process and the fact that there wasn't five rooms filled with papers, indicates to me that the staff is, has much better control over the accounting procedures than maybe in the past.
Yeah, I mean, other than having to bother someone when they're making cookies. No, it was, what we ask for, we get, and it's a pretty quick turnaround time. Part of it's just getting up and running. I mean, to, to build something to this magnitude, there's a lot of pieces that you guys have no control over. You have to reach out to the county. You have to reach out to the Maplewood School District. I'm not saying they're not responding, but they're, you're asking them, you're looking to find out how many employers, and you're doing these different things that aren't able just to happen overnight. So the process kind of, it takes a while to get the process up and running, but then once it, once it was started, I think, start to finish, we were done in 30 days or so. So, yeah. And most of it now, you know, thanks COVID, is, can be done, a lot of, everyone has moved to a lot more remote. So when we come, we don't have to spend a week here looking through stuff, because we were able to get all the bank statements we wanted, all the payroll reports. All of those things can be electronically uploaded to our portal, whereby I can work with staff, and they're not here bothering your staff. You're not training my staff, which is kind of how some firms, they send people out and they sit at your office for two weeks, and they ask you stupid questions. They know how to use our copier, so they just use it at our office instead. So that's kind of how we're different than other firms, is we really try to do as much as we can in the office, which, on the second side of it, it makes it look like we're not doing the audit. But I assure you, there's plenty here and about 1,000 files on the server back at the office. So is there any other, happy to answer any questions?
Any questions from council?
Thanks for being Bill Hall.
Yes.
Appreciate it. I have nothing to do with it. So it's 100% the staff who, you know, whatever we ask for, they give. There's never a hesitation, which is kind of what you want. You don't want people to, oh, well, do you need to see this, or anything like that. So when we ask for something, we get it right away, which tells me there's nothing to hide. And then it's leadership, top-down, you guys demand that they do these things, and they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. So when I served on the board, I took responsibility for the clean audit, so I'm going to do this. You guys can do the same here.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys have a nice evening.
Moving on to unfinished business, item number 11. Bill 6265, we need a final reading on the ordinance. Let me get to that so that I can read it. If you have that open, if you can go ahead and, and read the bill.
Okay, Bill 6266 is an ordinance of the city of Maplewood, Missouri to rezone 2555 Oakland Avenue from PA Public Activity District to SR Single Family Residential District.
Okay. I need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Since this is the third and final reading, we need a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Corell?
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Homa?
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Bill number 6265 is approved as ordinance 6060.
Okay. Next item is Bill 626, final reading for an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an interoperable radio system user agreement with St. Louis County. I'm still trying to get through the audit here, so if you could read that one, too, I'd appreciate it.
Hey, Bill 6267 is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to execute an interoperable radio system user agreement with St. Louis County.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Corell?
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Homa?
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Bill 6266 is approved as ordinance 6061.
Okay. The next item is under new business. We have a resolution authorizing the city manager to approve a master services agreement with Navigate Building Solutions in the amount of $17,400 to perform a feasibility study to determine the cost to expand existing police department facilities and to renovate the administration and building department facilities at City Hall. And, let's see. Bear with me one second here. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Are there questions?
Yeah, I have one. When is the CLIA accreditation review? Sorry.
They're scheduled to be on site in March, although the collection of the materials is ongoing, and submission of those materials, but they'll be on site in March.
And so as, as an outcome of that, we expect there are going to be needs that are not met, that this is, this is part of that, this study's part of that?
They have identified needs previously in previous assessments as well. This is the first time they'll be on site in a few years.
Is there any timeline with which, I know it says 12 to 18 months to complete, but are we required to move forward for the accreditation? Are we required to do anything in order to stay accredited?
We don't expect that will be the finding. We expect it will be a strongly worded recommendation that we attend to, the insufficiencies in the facility.
Okay.
On task order number one, section beyond schedules, they, they need to change the date from February 28th, 2024 to 2025. That would be helpful. Otherwise, they would have been complete with their, that scope of work by now. Also, with regards to the scope of services, it lists that consultant procurement is performed by Navigate, is the final decision on architectural and engineering consultants. Is that done by?
That would be by the city's approval.
Okay.
Yeah.
Same with contractor?
But they would help manage that bidding process.
Okay. They'll coordinate it, but they, it sounded like they were going to make the decision, which, okay. Are there other questions that maybe the city manager can answer?
No, this probably needed to be done a long time ago. Their facilities have been insufficient anyway for a while, so I'm glad we're doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, and for those people that are, that are listening tonight, we have a CLIA accreditation coming up, and we know that there's going to be deficiencies based on our current facilities that we're going to have to address. So we're trying to be proactive there and take care of those. And so I don't have any other questions?
I'll just note that we do expect this to be the totality of the cost for the feasibility study, so you would all budget it 55,000. So this is a considerable savings.
Even better, yeah.
Very much so.
So I'll entertain a motion to...
We've already, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, that, that was, we need a roll call vote then.
Hey, Councilmember Corell?
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Homa?
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Resolution 251 is approved.
Okay. The next item is resolution granting a pole sign for Petal Hair Lounge located at 2814 South Big Ben Boulevard.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Are there questions? There's no one from the business here, are there? I'm just wondering why they didn't include the, it's Petal Hair Salon, why Petal's not included in the name, or not Hair Salon, Hair Lounge. I don't know, it just seems a little misleading when you look at the, at the sign that it might actually be a lounge.
It's a hip thing. We don't...
So that was my assumption.
We're too old.
I was like, I'm not cool enough.
Okay, apparently.
You can get your hair done and hang out, sure.
Okay, and the signage was approved by, it meets the requirements of the signed ordinance, and it was approved by design and review, so we need a roll call vote, please.
Hey, counsel member Correll?
Yes.
Counsel member Falkingham?
Yes.
Counsel member Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Counsel member Homa?
Yes.
Counsel member Maddox?
Yes.
Counsel member Page?
Yes.
Resolution 252 is approved.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the bid from Saline Creek Grading LLC for the 2025 Deer Creek Park Field Flood Restoration Project in the amount of $95,578. And I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Would you like to briefly describe the scope of work that we're discussing?
This cost is for replacing the fields that were damaged in the flooding in November. This is not the totality of all repair work that needs to be done on the park. Estimates from the Public Works Department are that we should expect to spend about $140,000 all-in on all of the repairs that we need to do to the flood damage.
Yeah, is this based on the revised FEMA maps? They've been in flux for quite a while.
Well, we know that we're not eligible for the FEMA funding, simply because the total county damage fell below the threshold of $4 million, so there would be no federal or state reimbursement for this.
And are there going to be grading changes, design changes, to try to mitigate?
How do you do that? Just curious. You can't.
Not get the water from Brentwood, maybe?
You have to redirect Deer Creek, but I don't think you're going to stop the flooding there, not unless they put it underground or something.
Okay.
And this was the lower bid, correct?
This was the lower bid, and came with good references from other cities.
We're like half a million bucks into Deer Creek in the last five years.
Yes.
Just checking. Something we got to look at.
Yeah.
You mean turning?
We've mentioned that.
Turning it into a water park?
I don't know, I just, you know, how much money we got to.
Wetland, prairie restoration.
I mean, it's almost a standing light item for the budget at this point, to have reserves. Whether our annual flood cost is going to be now. Right, well, we could talk about that another time.
Yeah, that's all right.
Work session, yes, absolutely, high priority. And we will be engaging in conversations with the school district and our Parks and Rec Department prior to that to begin to understand what opportunities we might have to partner on costs.
I like it.
Are there any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Counsel member Correll?
Yes.
Counsel member Falkingham?
Yes.
Counsel member Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Counsel member Homa?
Yes.
Counsel member Maddox?
Yes.
Counsel member Page?
Yes.
Resolution 253 is approved.
The next item is Bill 6268, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to approve a cooperation agreement for the construction operation and maintenance of the Deer Creek Greenway Pedestrian Trail from South Big Ben Boulevard eastward to Canterbury Avenue.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Were there any questions about this agreement?
Did the city get all the clarification they needed?
And when are the plans, when will they be available for public review?
Prior to construction. I can't say exactly, but I'll find out and circle back.
Okay, I'm assuming people are going to want to know exactly how it's going to be handled and what the configuration is going to be. Are there any other questions that could be answered right now?
I have one more. Are we doing Greenwood too at the same time?
We are.
Okay, and that's all is coming up on our?
Yep, that project will start at the same time.
Okay.
So we'll have some approvals related to that upcoming.
Cool, thank you.
And the, in the verbiage, it said that once construction is substantially completed, the city will take ownership. And it was written in that the, in maintenance of the entire greenway and on the land owned or under control of the city. Will the Greenway still own any of the property?
No, the Greenway will not own any of the property.
Okay, so the inclusion of that is somewhat redundant?
We wanted to ensure, because the trail starts in this section, starts in Webster, in that new park that you approved the boundary adjustment for, and it ends in the city of St. Louis at Slay Park. So we wanted to just be very specific that we are maintaining the portion that falls within our city limits.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, Bill 6268, first and second, sorry. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to approve a cooperation agreement for the construction operation and maintenance of the Deer Creek Greenway Pedestrian Trail from South Big Ben Boulevard to Canterbury Avenue.
Motion to approve the bill?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will move on to its third and final reading to be held at our next meeting. Item number 13 are council and staff reports. The first is the mayor's report. I just want to, like everyone else here, probably wants to thank Public Works for the work that they've done clearing our streets. The feedback has been very positive from both residents and visitors to the city of Maplewood, and it's helped our residents and our businesses tremendously, so I just wanted to thank them for their hard work. Ward one report?
Yeah, thank you. I would also like to thank Public Works for always being very timely with clearing the snow. I would also like to suggest to Ward two folks, maybe you guys got it your own pockets, could get some hay to Hummer, so when us Ward one folks come sledding, we don't die on your fence. We had a super fun time sledding, it was a blast, but we almost lost a few children.
Sledd at your own risk.
We may need some signs. Yeah, happy to report that the residents of Ward one happily went to Kellogg and Hummer, and we all had a blast, but thank you very much. I do really like this new report. I think it's a really good way for us to engage better with the community. I'll probably have a more serious approach to the next one, but thank you.
Ward two report?
I have nothing to report, but I would just like to second the sense of thank you to Public Works and Coryell, sledd at your own risk.
There you go.
Ward three report?
I just thank Public Works, they always do a good job, and it's kind of an extraordinary snow with the ice underneath it. State of Missouri kind of forgot about St. Louis City and Kansas City, unfortunately, but anyway, the municipalities that Ken Plow did, and always they do a good job, and that's all I got for Ward two.
Okay, the next item is the city attorney's report. And the city manager's report?
This setup really has me getting my steps in.
For a Fitbit?
Yeah, it's part of our new wellness program.
There you go.
So yes, the snow event was challenging for all of us, and I as well want to recognize our Public Works Department and also confirm that there is a city ordinance that sidewalks do need to be cleared by building owners. We know that that has been challenging and possibly impossible for some folks, so the city is not taking the step of enforcing that ordinance at this time. That's not a good use of our police resources. But we are identifying areas where additional work needs to be done and where we need to maybe pitch in and clean up maybe where MoDOT or the county didn't do the best job, so we continue to address areas on kind of a spot capacity as needed, and that includes some of the major crosswalk intersections where school kids are crossing. So it was an unusual snow event, but I think we made it through relatively well compared to our peers around us. So thank you to our Public Works Department, our police, our fire, and all of our staff for their flexibility. I wanted to propose to council, this is the second item in my report, that we consider doing a work session to discuss the feasibility of putting together a charter commission. The October 22 work session brought some of this into our conversation, just lightly touching on some of the deficiencies in the current charter. I was hoping that you all would consider a conversation to look into that a little bit more deeply, so if you would be willing to do that, I can look for scheduling and put together some resources to help inform us on what that might look like. A charter commission would make recommendations to change the charter. Any changes to the charter, as you know, would be required to go to our citizens for a vote. I've also included in your packet our 2025 meeting calendar, which includes most of the major standing reports that will be delivered, as well as the board and commission reports.
Thank you for that, by the way.
Yeah.
Excellent.
If you have any feedback or suggestions, anything you need changed, it's not too late for that. And I think all of our Maplewood 101 graduates have since departed, but we had.
We have one.
Ward one, one, by the way.
Represents.
The best ward.
We did a survey, we did a program survey after the conclusion of Maplewood 101, and we got excellent response. Everybody involved rated a worthy way to spend their time. I've included the full report in your packet. I will note that we went over by at least 30 minutes every single session, so feedback was, why don't you just make it two and a half hours? We probably could have made it three, but I don't want to really tax our citizens too much, but I think that's a reflection that there is great interest in the work that the city does from our community. I wanted to also just make everybody aware with a brief reminder that Missouri's hands-free cellphone law is now being enforced as of January 1. This is a secondary offense for municipal policing, so we will not pull anybody over if we see them talking on their cellphones, but if we are pulling you over for a primary offense and you are on your cellphone, then you will be cited for that.
Can't talk on your cellphone?
Sorry, have your cellphone in your hand.
Or lap.
Yes, you can talk on your cellphone. Don't hold it. We do not encourage citizens arrests under any circumstance.
That'd be nice.
And finally, the last item in my report is a recognition for Steve Rancourt, who is the father-in-law of our assistant fire chief, Matt Wilcox, who built these fantastic tables for us so that the city attorney, city clerk, and city manager all have proper places to sit and do our work during public meetings. He constructed these free of charge for us. We just paid for the materials, so I wanted to do a public shout-out to him.
Very nice craftsmanship.
Any questions?
Thank you.
If you want to recognize him in some manner, you know, woodworking tools or whatever, I'll contribute.
He was recognized with a generous gift basket from some local businesses.
I would make one complaint, they actually don't match because they're too nice. They're nicer than us.
Wood grain.
Gorgeous, they look great.
Amazing job.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the Continued Business License Revocation Hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, public comment, oh my God. Item number 14 is public comment. Is there anyone that would like to join the conversation up here?
No pressure, Ward one folks.
Okay, I hope I didn't put anyone off there. Item number 15 then is the Continued Business License Revocation Hearing for Mape Vape LLC at 7213 Manchester Road. And do we have a representative from Mape Vape here?
We do not.
Okay.
Any word on?
No response.
Okay, easy enough.
Unfortunately.
I think we made it very clear as to what the ramifications would be, so in this case, we need a motion to vote, to revoke the business license.
Mayor, before you make that, before you move forward, the city would like to make clear on the record that you're accepting into evidence the exhibits that were offered at the last hearing. And in particular, I just want to update that we have certified copies of the ordinances that were offered that are being provided to you all for the record in this case. So if you could just say on the record that you're accepting those as part of the hearing, that would be great, and then you can move on for the vote.
We'll accept the aforementioned documentation as part of this hearing, and I appreciate you prompting me for that. So at this point, we had a motion?
Yeah, a motion to revoke the business license for Maplewood Vape LLC.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any further conversation? It's a shame, but roll call vote, please.
Counsel member Correll?
Yes.
Counsel member Falkingham?
Yes.
Counsel member Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Counsel member Homa?
Yes.
Counsel member Maddox?
Yes.
Counsel member Page?
Yes.
Okay, this revocation has been approved.
Thank you. Item number 16 is a motion to hold a closed session to discuss matters relating to real estate matters and employee matters. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to hold a closed session for the real estate matters and employee matters?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will go into closed session, and then after that, we will adjourn, so.